Welcome to our Jackson Madison County July Board Meeting. Before we officially open up, let us all bow for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now we will all stand the pledge, the flag, please.
My pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move to the agenda, I just wanted to remind everyone that we continue to be under the governor's executive order through August 29th. First order of business, approval of the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion to second. All in favor, let it be known by a sound of aye.
Aye.
And motion approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Shall I move?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sound of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have appearance before the board. First of all, we have recognition of Southside High School Board's basketball team and Southside High School Athletic Director. Dr. Catley will come and make those presentations. While he's doing that, I failed to mention that I really appreciate Mayor Conger and the City of Jackson for allowing us to use this venue to allow us to have social distance. Let's give these young men a hand while they're coming in. Enough of two teams, huh? Maybe that's why we're winning. Well, the guys are lining up. Principal Tucker, Assistant Principal Sane, Coach Fuller. We apologize for being so late for recognizing you guys, but it's better late than never.
Thank you.
And we appreciate what Southside can start out this year academically doing, and we appreciate what you've done with these young athletes.
Thank you.
Dr. Catley?
Yes, sir. Chairman and Board, yes, we're so glad that you're here to celebrate with our basketball team, Southside Basketball Team, for the record, 32-0. You'll also be able to see them thanks to friends of the chamber.
Have they forgotten about us?
Uh, excuse me.
Have they forgotten about us?
We have you. We have you here. Airways, Effie Wright, Drive, South Highland, and Old Hickory.
That is crazy.
The sign, the marquee signs are going to have their picture of your team, coaching staff and the team, that you can drive by and see them running from July 19th for 30 days. So make sure you take a peek at them. We also wanted to make sure that we honored Coach with, this banner will be, it's a miniature one, it's for his office, but that's going to be hanging down from the gym. Ms. Tucker has graciously said, and Coach Sane said that they want to make sure they recognize that. So this is just for your office, Coach. Thank you. We appreciate you. Dr. Williams is going to read some things about Southside and call the players next up.
Okay, so we are so excited about Southside and proud of them. 32-0 undefeated season. The 33rd Annual Popular Bluff Missouri 2019 Basketball Showdown Champions. They defeated a 3A and a 5A nationally ranked team. Number one, AA all season. District 14, AA Champions. Region 7, AA Champions. Substate Champions earned a state tournament appearance, and we know they would have won it. Tennessee Associated Press class AA State Champions and made history for Southside with all of their accomplishments this season. Let's give them another hand.
Say your name all the way across, okay? Say it loud.
Devin Cole.
Bryson Bay.
Keith Whedon.
Randy Moore.
Vera Myers.
Bryson Carter.
Brandon Metcalf.
Josh Mann.
Tom Ceballos.
Rick O'Shan.
Paul McEnroe.
Ford Martin.
Ethan Brooks.
Bradler Groves.
Devonte Bogut.
Maggie Beard.
Aaron Martin.
Devin Edison.
Coach Devonta Fuller.
Kevin Kowal.
Phil Jerran Lysik.
Coach Henry Wigg.
Coach Jeremy Love.
Right. Thank you. Now we want to recognize Coach Sane. What's Coach Sane, an athletic director? Coach Sane? Let Coach Gilbert talk here, our district athletic director. We want to honor Coach Sane tonight, too. Dr. Williams is going to read, Coach, come on up. Come on up here. Read about Coach Sane.
So we are recognizing Coach Cassandra Sane. She's been employed with Jackson Madison County for 20 years. Her experience ranges from educational assistant, special ed teacher, and serving the last seven years as assistant principal and athletic director at Southside High School. She is currently the first African-American female assistant principal and athletic director at Southside High and has ever employed. She serves as the school's athletic director, school's crisis and safety team, supervisor for exceptional student department, and supervisor of the students' climate team. Section 504, school coordinator, member of the school's RTI team, and a member of the district's facility team, and the Jackson Madison County New Normal School Initiative team. A 2019-20 graduate of the National Institute for School Leadership Program sponsored by Jackson Madison County and voted by Southside Student Body for the 2019-2020 Most School Spirit Award. And she's honored today, awarded the TSSAA AF Bridges 2019 Athletic Director of the Year.
Let's give our athletic director and the team another round of applause. Thank you, Dr. Catley and Dr. Williams. Next on the agenda, having an award to our previous superintendent, Ray Washington, this Up to the podium, Mr. Washington.
On behalf of the Jackson Madison County School System, this, that's something else you ought to, I'll get it out. On behalf of the school board, office of superintendent, we would like to recognize Mr. Ray Washington for his career service, his service as the superintendent for the Jackson Madison County School System for 2019 and '20, and for leaving in good shape to move forward. Our superintendent appreciates his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Washington. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Does anyone would like to make public comments at this time?
This working?
Yeah.
Good evening. I am Janice Carroll. I am a third grade teacher at Denmark Elementary. I came tonight because, as all teachers are, we are interested into what's going to happen with the plans for opening the schools, which I hope that that discussion starts tonight and teachers are informed. But I wanted to just speak a little bit about what I'm hearing are common concerns from teachers and other school employees, such as bus drivers. Of course, we want to make sure our children are safe. We're teachers. We're in the profession of educating teachers. If we're not going to school, we can't do that. So yes, we want to be able to do that. We want to make sure it's done safely. We want to make sure it's safe for the teachers, students, anybody who walks in that door, we hope to be as safe as we possibly can. If something were to happen, I hope we have Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, and I hope those committees that have been working hard for the last few days or few weeks are trying to come up with every single scenario they can think of, such as if masks are required, is the system going to provide those masks? If we have to disinfect our rooms, where does the disinfectant come from? If teachers have to be quarantined or sick, what's going to happen to their sick days? Those are things that teachers are concerned about. What's instruction going to look like? If we have abbreviated classrooms as far as one week we have students on certain days and the others we flip-flop, that's some things some systems are doing. I could probably stand here and give you 40 different scenarios, but I'm not going to. But I just hope that the communication lines are very open and all those scenarios are thought through before we start school. So, and that includes cafeteria and bus drivers and everybody else. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Let me just mention, I failed to mention during the opening that we have two school board members, Shannon Stewart and Janice Hampton, that are attending virtually this There's no other public comments. I'm going to ask Chris, who's here with Crocker Construction, to give us an update on JCM and Madison Projects. Thank you.
I'm with Healthy Community LLC, the developer for the Jackson Schools projects, which includes Madison Academic and Jackson Central Mary, and just wanted to say we're real pleased with progress that's been done so far. You know, we closed the deal at the end of March and started construction that first week of April. Chairman Johnson wanted to say thank you for putting together a fantastic groundbreaking ceremony last Friday. It was a great day to, you know, celebrate the construction of these two new schools, getting Jackson Central Mary back online and Madison Academic over on the Madison campus, I mean Lambeth, University of Lambeth campus. We've been submitting monthly reports to Ray Washington since May and June with y'all going with the virtual meetings and whatnot. We will have our formal report for June by the end of next week, and Chris Rice with Crocker Construction, our construction manager, kind of can give you a brief update on where we are with the construction.
Thanks, Chris.
Appreciate it. We started construction 1st of April, and currently we're on schedule. We don't have any budget issues so far. Both jobs started 1st of April. I think you have those reports. JCM, we have asbestos abatement going on, new roof going on, plumbing work going on, electrical work going on, site work going on. Madison, we have site work, we have concrete work, and by the end of the month, we should have steel going up. So that's just kind of where we're at, and so far, so good. If anybody had any questions after those reports, or...
Any questions for Chris?
All right, thank you.
Next, we have JM, CEA President Announcement and Report, Ms. Price.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Erlene Price. I'm a teacher at Thelma Barker, a board member of JMCA and former president. I am speaking on behalf of our president, Jeff Davis, who had other things to do tonight. On behalf of JMCA, we welcome Dr. King to Jackson Madison County School System. Also, we thank the board members and Dr. King for a voice at this meeting. Dr. King and Jeff have already met, and some of the things that they talked about are bonuses for teachers. As of now, we're not getting one, but Dr. King has assured us that he's looking for money for those bonuses. We want to definitely say thank you for that. Also, then we have a monthly meeting, Dr. King and Jeff, and also a committee from JMCA. And we want to just, just one more thing that Jeff told me to say, thank you for the board. And then I want to talk about the meeting, the committee that Janice was talking about. I am on that committee. I want to say thank you for allowing teachers and administrators, I see some administrators there, and some more people from the city, thank you for allowing me to be on that committee. And some of the things that she talked about, we did talk about at the meeting. Thank you so much. Looking forward to a different year. We're in COVID-19, we know, but it is our responsibility as teachers to do the best we can for our students, and that's what we plan to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Next, we have our financial report.
Sure. Of course, this is the first couple of weeks of the new fiscal year. There are no budget amendments this month, but be standby for next month, there'll be several. What I want to point out is something that we've talked about the last few weeks. You might remember initially, a couple of months ago, the county gave us notice that we might be having a $6 million shortfall for the fiscal year 1920 school year, which is the past school year, and that number got adjusted to 2.1 million most recently. I want to point out that the numbers you see June, okay, June revenues are reflective, actually, of April, okay? These reports are two months behind. And so what you see there are the sales tax numbers for April in respect to how we are funded as a district. Initially, it was anticipated that we could be up to 25% down in revenue in March and April, and it netted out that we're only 3% down in March and 12.81% down in April. We'll receive those May numbers sometime mid to late July. Now, that would be the last set of numbers we'd get because the 12-month cycle for sales tax revenue, as it applies to us, runs from June through May, okay? So when we get those numbers in July, they'll be unaudited, and those will be the number that drives the bottom line on how we were funded for our 1920 school year. Currently, it's stated that we'll be made whole for the next, this current fiscal year, 2021, that anticipated revenues, that there may not be a shortfall. Now, the shortfall that we anticipate of $2.1 million for this fiscal, this past fiscal year is simply derived from anticipated shortfalls because of the COVID crisis and anticipated sales tax revenue declines. We don't know if that's going to occur or not. We don't know if May is going to be declining, if it's going to be flat, if it's going to be an increase, which at some point will give us our year-to-date numbers as to how we're funded for the 1920 fiscal year. So just want to make sure you understand, the number you see in June actually are April sales tax numbers, is a two-month lag, and when we get May's number in July, that will close out our running 12-month calendar that runs from June through May. At that point, we'll have unaudited numbers, and then at some point in April or September, we'll close out the year. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to entertain them.
Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Washington?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I hear what you're saying. I just want to make sure we understand, because if I look at June, it shows collections of a little over $4.2 million.
Yes, sir.
And then if I look at this next sheet that was in our packet, it says this $4.2 million was collected and allocated in the month of May. So are we sure that that's April?
Yes, I've confirmed that. That is the April sales tax numbers. Now, they could have been allocated in May, but that's the collection for April.
For April.
The collection for April sales tax.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the only other thing is, we look at this report with 11 months reporting, we're actually almost $94,000 ahead of last year.
Year-to-date. Year-to-date, yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So we got the month of April, though, out of the way, which presumably...
Yes, was presumably the worst month.
The worst month.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when should we, when should we get that last, the May numbers?
Sometime mid this month to late this month. The state will send those figures, unaudited, and then, of course, to confirm everything, we'll get an audited statement for the end of the year that will close out the year. Yes, sir.
One question on our general purpose budget. On the year-end estimated numbers, right?
Yes.
So actually, the projection, though, is that we will be $267,758 in the black.
Yes.
So that, those dollars will go to our...
Fund balance.
Fund balance?
Yes, sir.
But, excuse me, but that assumes we get our numbers of effort, right?
Fully funded, right. Yeah, assumes that we're fully funded. And all that will get confirmed, like I said, within the next month.
Let me ask you, if I may, the other component of the revenue that funds us is property taxes. Do we have any kind of update on where they're running? Is there any kind of...
Yeah, of course, you know, property taxes are so delayed a little bit because of COVID, many of the real estate companies deferred payments and things of that nature, so collections are a little bit behind there. But at the same time, all those will be confirmed at the same time.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else got any questions for Mr. Washington?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, next to our human capital report, Dr. Catley.
Yes, sir. Dr. King, board chair and board members, we have, you have in your packet, 11 resignations, four retired, and we're sad that we had one pass, Ms. Far Fuller. So right now, our human capital department has filled 109 teaching positions, and we currently have 41 vacancies that we're working very hard to fill. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Catley? Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, action items, our FY '21 budget revised, and I'm going to ask our attorney, Dale, actually, to start off, and Dr. King, also, any additions that he needs to make concerning the budget?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to go through a little bit on the budget process first. As you know, the board approved a budget. It was taken to the county commission, and the county commission revised that budget and approved a revised budget. Under the statute, the county commission can alter or revise, and I also do not like talking with this mask, but the total amount of expenditures as proposed by the board. So they can revise or alter the total expenditures, and if they alter or revise the proposed budget of the Board of Education, the director of schools should submit a revised budget within 10 days. A revised budget within the total expenditures. If that revised budget complies with the total expenditures that the county approved, then that becomes the budget. If it's not approved, then we go into what they call a continuation budget. And in a continuation budget, the school system can spend no more than the amount that it spent in the same month in the prior fiscal year while operating under a continuation budget. However, ultimately, a final operating budget has to be approved by August 31. If the county and the school board fail to agree to a budget by August 31, by operation of law, the school budget will become equal to the required, what's required for minimal maintenance of effort. And then if that happens three consecutive years, in the third year, by operation of law, the school gets a 3% increase in maintenance of effort. Now, I want to go through some differences in what the board approved and what the county approved. I see there are three differences in those budgets. Number one, the revenue for local taxes for fiscal year '20 was decreased in the county budget by about $2.1 million. And it, by doing that, it shorts its statutory obligation to fund maintenance of effort for fiscal year '20, which ultimately results, if you look at the county's budget, would result in a decrease in the fund balance. Now, Mr. Washington talked about this briefly. We don't know at this point, even though that's what's in the budget that was approved by the county, we don't know yet what the shortfall, if any, will be for fiscal year '20. Hopefully, there will not be one, but what they have projected is a $2.1 million shortfall. And what they have projected, they being the county, what they have projected is that that would come from fund balance, and I'll come back to that. So that's difference number one in the budgets. Difference number two is that the local revenue contribution for fiscal year '21 was decreased based upon ADM, and it was decreased around $400,000 based on the loss of students. Now, under maintenance of effort, they can do that. What they do is they use the K through 12 numbers, which is legally what can happen. That's the legal mandate. Unfortunately, what that doesn't consider is that while we lost students in K through 12, it does not consider the fact that we added students in the pre-K program. So they, even though our total population increased, because the statute says that they base ADMs on K through 12, they took that reduction in maintenance of effort. The third, that's second change, the third change in the two budgets is the AMRESCO payment. And you can find that in category 82330, line 620, and in the county budget, they increased that AMRESCO payment from $290,000 to $420,000, which is a $130,000 increase. Now, the problem is that increase in $130,000, based on what they've done, will come from our fund balance. So I just wanted to point out, those are the three different... So I just wanted to point out, those are the three differences in the budgets that I see. I want to talk a little bit about maintenance of effort. The statute requires the county to maintain revenue estimates that are at least equal to the minimum budget required to comply with maintenance of effort. Maintenance of effort can decrease based on ADMs, and that's what they've done. They've decreased maintenance of effort based on ADM on K through 12. The maintenance of effort is not just a budgeting requirement, but it's also a funding requirement. There's a Tennessee Attorney General opinion that says the county, when facing a shortfall in sales tax revenues, the AG was asked if the county was financially responsible for providing full funding of the school system as budgeted from revenue sources other than sales tax revenue. The Attorney General, in that opinion, said that the county had to fully fund maintenance of effort, even though there was a shortfall in revenues. So the county's position, as I understand it, based on advice that they got from CTAS, is that they can use fund balance to make up the difference in shortfall in sales tax revenue. That's their position. And the Attorney General has said, in an opinion back in 2011, that they can't do that. Let's talk about fund balance. And a lot of this is going to come from our consulting attorney, Chuck Cagle. Chuck Cagle has given us the opinion that there is no statute, rule, opinion, or regulation that allows the County Commission to reduce maintenance of effort by any amount in the school district's unobligated fund balance. Chuck Cagle has given us the opinion that it takes a joint action by both the Board of Education and the County Commission to appropriate and spend funds in that unobligated fund balance. He went on and said the County Commission cannot unilaterally appropriate fund balance dollars and place them in the education budget. That position is supported by Ten Code Annotated 49-3-352, which says that any use of fund balance, and I'm quoting, must be recommended by the Board of Education prior to appropriation by the County Commission. Now, there is an AG opinion that gives a different result. However, I asked Chuck Cagle about that opinion. And that opinion was a 2004 opinion, which was done before the statute was changed to require the Board of Education to approve appropriation from fund balance. In 2014, the statute changed to require the board to approve any use of fund balance. Now Chuck says that that was, of course, he's very involved in legislative history and with a lot of the going on in the Capitol. And he says that that was specifically done as a result of three local legislative bodies appropriating fund balance reserves without the approval of the Board of Education. And when that was done, they changed that statute to require the Board of Education to approve the use of fund balance money. So that's the issue on fund balance. The final issue I wanted to talk about is the line item issue. And this goes to the AMRESCO payment. I'd said earlier that the statute allows the County Commission to revise the board's proposed budget. However, it says it may only alter or revise the total amount of expenditures as proposed. It does not authorize them to go in and make changes in the line items in the budget. They can change the very bottom number, and that's the total expenditures, but they can't go in and make a line item change. To do that would basically give them line item veto rights. And there's a whole long line of cases out there that says that you cannot, the County Commission does not have line item veto rights over the school's budget. And now, what makes this a little bit unique is that this is a line item in the budget that is an obligation of the district to the county. That makes it a little bit unique. But in general, and in the main, you can, the county cannot change a line item. All they can do is change the total expenditure amount. And so that's the issue on the line item part. I'm trying to see if there were any other notes I had here. I believe I've covered the reduction for decreased ADM, the line item, use of fund balance for FY '20 and FY '21. So if anybody has questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Carol?
Yes, sir. I can't talk either through this thing. Go back, if you will, and just kind of go over where you said, three consecutive years. And then after that...
That if the county and the board have three consecutive years where they do not agree to a budget. Now, keep in mind, ultimately, there has to be a budget, and it will be at the maintenance of effort level. I mean, ultimately, we have to have a budget or the Department of Education by October 1 will step in. So if there's not an agreed budget, though, it is simply a maintenance of effort budget. If we do that for three consecutive years, on year three, automatically and by operation of law, the maintenance of effort obligation of the county will increase by 3%.
So when you get to, what is this? I'm looking at my notes here.
Okay.
The, I think it's the fund balance. But will you say that the County Commission cannot change the line items? I believe that's what you said. But they could, the overall expenditures or... Okay, so that's not advantageous to school boards, right?
Well, I mean, what they can't do is they, and this deals, the line item deals with the AMRESCO payment. And they increased the AMRESCO payment by $130,000 from what was approved by the board. So they increased that. And the point is that if they wanted to increase total expenditures, they could increase total expenditures, but they can't go into the line items and make adjustments in the line items. And that's what the county did in this instance. Now, granted, it is unique in this instance because that happens to be a line item that is a district obligation to the county. But in the normal situation, they cannot adjust line items. And they basically adjusted the line item.
Jim, Jim was next.
Mr. Thomas, there's one other thing that's unique, though, because we have been paying back $1 million a year on the AMRESCO payment, correct?
That's my understanding.
We've been paying back, as a matter of fact, up until a few years ago, we were actually servicing the debt on the bond. I think the county stepped in, paid off the bond, and so then we've been paying them back. So we've been paying right at $1 million a year. The other thing that makes it a little unique, that I think the board needs to understand, is that we came up with a $290,000 number that we'd like to pay back. They've counted back with 130, still substantially less than what we've normally been paying back on that. Is that, Mr. Washington, is that right?
That's correct. This year, we were scheduled to pay $870,000. And based on the reduction in revenues that were anticipated, we asked if we paid $290,000, which is basically a third of the payment. And then they counted back and asked if we paid $430,000, which would help balance their balance.
I just think the board needs to understand all that.
Right. Yeah, the actual payment is $870,000.
Good honors.
Oh, well, so from my understanding, I understand that we asked to pay less. But with this COVID and all of the uncertainties, I'm wondering why we cannot stick to what we voted to do. Also, I don't quite understand the county asking us to take money from the fund balance. So could someone explain that to me? Because again, like I'm saying, that this is, we're all in a new arena. And there has to be some give and some take. And we are, don't know what the expenses are going to be. So please explain to me taking the money out of the fund balance.
You want me to try to address that?
Yes, yes.
There, I think there's two issues on the fund balance. One is fiscal year '20. And really, that's going to determine, the revenues for this last month is really going to determine whether we actually have to get into fiscal year '20 in the fund balance. The county's, the budget that they approved shows that we will have to get into that around $2.1 million. And so that, but I don't think any of us know yet whether that's going to come to fruition until we see what the tax revenues are. And what I would, my concern about the county budget showing a 2.1 dip into the fund reserves is that if we accept that, are we going to be held to saying we agreed to that to coming from the fund balance? Chuck Cagle has told us that they're obligated to fund that, and they can't touch fund balance without our permission. So I don't want us to somehow tacitly give permission for them to use a shortfall in fiscal year '20 and take it from fund balance. Now, that's fiscal year '20. And then fiscal year '21, we actually, the board, the budget it approved, had some money coming from fund balance. But the difference is, is now with the county's budget, they decreased the ADM, and they decreased, or actually increased, our payment on AMRESCO. So the decrease in ADM and the increase on the payment to AMRESCO under the county's budget will come from fund balance.
Thank you, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. And again, it gets back to the issue. The county has been told by CTAS that they can do that. We're being told by our consultant that they cannot do that. We actually discussed and tried to get our consultant and CTAS to come to a table and just talk about the issue. But CTAS said that they will not do that. So, and the county was agreeable, they wanted to do it. We were agreeable. Chuck Cagle was agreeable. It's just that CTAS said that they did not do that. Because we were going to try to see if we couldn't iron out and make sure we understood all the differences. And CTAS would not do that.
Dale, let me mention one other thing, too, that in addition to the $2.1 million that they want to pull from our fund balance because of the projected shortfall, and we don't know what that shortfall is going to be, like you mentioned, is the fact that last year, the county gave us $1.5 million from local purpose tax. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
That they're not giving us this year. So with the $420,000, $416,000, $410,000 that we're not getting because of attendance, so that's $2 million that the county is not giving us this year. We already had made a $2 million concession in budget year '20 by giving up, I think, $2 million in capital, one of our capital projects.
So, yeah, we had discussed and moved $2 million that we had anticipated to spend in education capital, moving forward to this year for a different capital project for the finishing of Madison and JCM, for the furnishings and equipment for both of those schools. We had projected to use that money for the locker rooms at West Bemis and JCT. But we moved that, the education capital money to help offset some of the furnishings and equipment costs that were going to Madison and JCM. As you heard, they're on schedule, and we anticipate moving into those buildings next August. So the orders for those types of things would have to happen in this current fiscal year. Can't wait till next fiscal year to do that.
Okay, okay. My point is, you know, we already made the $2 million concession in budget year '20, all right? So there's also now almost $2 million that we didn't receive, we won't receive because of the $1.5 local purpose tax we won't receive, $420,000 in ADM. In addition to that, we took $2.8 million of our fund balance to balance our budget. Is that right, Dale? That we were going on, I think it's $2.8 million to balance our budget, which we probably should ask the county to fund. So what we've been trained to do, I guess, through this process, is ask for minimum, which is maintenance of effort. So we have given, we made a lot of concessions already. And I think $2.1 more, $2.1 more million has put us in a bad spot, especially with us not knowing what school's opening is going to look like. With us already taking $2.8 million out of our fund balance ourselves to balance our budget.
Once again, it's anticipated, and we'll know exactly where we stand by the end of July. Yep.
Mr. Chairman. Jim, if Dale, if we were to reject the County Commission's revised budget of expenditures, what would be the next thing in the process if we were to do that as a board?
Well, we'd go in, the county, not just the board, but the county would go into a continuation budget because there would not be a budget approved. And what that means is that the county, I mean, the school board could only spend what it spent in the prior fiscal year, for instance, in the month of July and in the month of August. Until there is, you know, it would maybe require people to get back to the table and see if we can't come up with, because at any point, we could agree on a budget between the county and the board. We could agree on something before August 31. But if there's not an agreement by August 31, unless we got an extension by the controller, which they're very reluctant to grant. But then on August 31, what would happen by operation of law is that it would be a maintenance of effort budget. And again, it's really about total expenditures because they can't go in and adjust line items.
Right.
So it's all about that total expenditures. And that's what would happen. And if that happens for three consecutive years, then there's an increase in maintenance of effort, again, by operation of law, 3%.
So in other words, we still have a month and a half that we could hopefully come to an agreement between the county and the board to work out a budget?
Yes, you have a time period... Yes, you, you have a time period to work out a budget. The problem is, and I don't know the numbers, I don't know what the school system spent in the month of July of last year. And I don't know what the school system spent in the month of August last year. But we couldn't exceed those expenditures while we're in a continuation budget. And, and, and it occurred to me this afternoon, I don't know whether there will be a need to exceed those expenditures in this COVID nineteen environment in the month of July and August more than we spent in the prior fiscal year. I don't, I don't know the details of all that. But if we go into a continuation budget, we're limited to our expenditures from July and August of the prior fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions for Dale? Dr. King, would you chime in? I think we talked about some, some over. It's also.
Shall I?
Okay, okay. Can you give me Shannon?
Yeah.
Okay, you, you, you're here with everybody.
Okay.
Up and Mr. Chairman. What was your question again?
Concerning some information you, you received from Comptroller's Office concerning the budget.
Okay, I reached out to the Comptroller's Office regarding the budget and your executive summary that I submitted to you all this week. It gave you all Rusty Crow's opinion. Dale, did you want to speak to any of that regarding the budget? I think that more, that was more or less around expenditure. And I think our conversation now is more around fund balance. And so that's what that, that, that was, I think, would I be safe to say that, Dale?
And also that, that opinion was really talking about how do you enforce?
Right.
How do you enforce the limitations that the county has on approving a budget?
Okay. Okay. So with that, the board, we, we just need to decide, which is an action item, if we are going to accept the budget that the, the county actually altered based, versus what we actually voted on.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Go ahead, Dale.
Can I make one other point?
Sure.
If.
If it's the will of the board to accept the budget of, of the county commission, if it's the will of the board to do that, then what I think that we do is we accept the total expenditures as approved by the county commission. And that's all we have to do is accept the total expenditures. And I would want to specifically state, in whatever motion is made, I would, I would ask the board to consider specifically stating that we do not approve any use of fund balance money beyond what has been approved by the board. Because I don't, I, I would not want someone to take the position that if we approve their budget, that we're also approving the decrease in our fund balance.
Right.
So I, I think to be clear, if we were going to approve their budget, what we'd need is a motion to approve the total expenditures as is outlined in the county budget, with clarification that we do not approve any money coming from our fund balance beyond what the board has adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the total expenditures as presented with the stipulation that no money is being pulled from the fund balance other than that that has already been approved by the board.
Second.
Second.
Any second? Any questions?
Dr. King, I'd like to know your recommendation, your recommendation on this.
I, I support Mr. Arnold's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
All in favor, let it be known by a sign of a "I."
Uh-huh.
Those opposed? Most in care. Thanks, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Next, on action items, you have a copy of our twenty twenty annual conferences for superintendent, board members, and board secretary. Anyone want to have that copy? We need a motion to approve those conferences.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the twenty twenty annual conferences with the board.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of a "I." Those opposed? Most in care. Next, we have any committee reports? With Janice's on electronically, she wanted me to mention the legislative meeting we had with Senator Jackson and Representative Shaw, which was very informative. And actually, we got done to almost commit to some action item. Almost. So those that attended, if you have, you know, board members that attended, if you want to make any comments, feel free to do so. But they did ask us to hold them accountable and to ask them to come visit more often.
And they did agree that teacher pay raises would be on the agenda in their next legislative meeting.
Right, right. Okay, next on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Okay. Think this is a better one. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to offer my gratitude for the warm welcome on last week. I sincerely appreciate the many of you all who came out early, early Wednesday morning to welcome my family and myself to Jackson. We are, we're certainly humbled by that. I want to talk about our new normal, school reentry, for a second. I have Dr. Williams here this evening. And her department is going to give us a recap of our results from the online survey that we, we put out a couple of weeks ago for teachers and also for families. But I want to speak to, to the initiative briefly and just share the vision around the initiative. The School New Normal Initiative just came, thanks, I appreciate that. If you see, the School New Normal Initiative came just from thinking about what happened in the spring and then what education or public education will look like moving forward. And I thought this would be a great opportunity for Jackson Madison County to really, really take advantage of how do we educate students moving forward after this pandemic? So there are three parts to the New Normal Initiative. Reentry, recovery, and reimagine. So when you think about reentry, that's where we're in now. So we are working through work teams with stakeholders to determine how do we reenter. Once we enter, we have to think about recovery for all students. Our students have been out of school for almost six months. And so we have to make sure that we have the right material in front of students. And we have to make sure that we are pushing the right level of instruction for our students. This will require supporting teachers and providing them with the professional development that they need. And then the third phase would be reimagine. How, how could we do things differently? How do we do things differently moving forward in terms of educating students in the Jackson Madison County school system? So if you click, we, we've put out this roadmap and it has just been our guide to give to families, teachers as to what's happening. This is updated weekly. And as you can see, the most recent update was today. And it basically shares information around what the work teams did this week. And also, if you keep scrolling, if you keep scrolling and click the message from our chief of staff and public information officer, if you click that message for us.
Jackson Madison County school system is preparing for the safe reentry of twelve thousand students into our twenty-three different campuses. However, the coronavirus pandemic our world is currently facing will make reentry a challenge. With flexibility and teamwork, we can find success as we undertake this very worthy endeavor. COVID nineteen is forcing us to realize any potential stop date is just as important as our start date. If the pandemic forces our schools to close in the future, how will we continue to educate our students adequately? This is the question our New Normal Initiative will answer. Developing a new normal in response to the coronavirus pandemic is as much as an opportunity as it is a challenge. We are taking this opportunity to ensure that every student has access to high-quality instruction and support to be academically prepared. Prepare to meet the demands of the classroom and life after graduation. With this shift in how schools operate in the future, this is a great opportunity to launch a bold and innovative approach to educating students in our public school system. For our district leaders and administrators, the conversation is more than simply reentry. Work teams have been assigned to key areas of our district. Schools, operations, communications, and academics. Parents in the Jackson Madison County school system have also played a part in this teamwork approach as your answers and responses to our online surveys will impact our new normal work teams. Full results of the parent surveys will be announced tonight during our monthly school board meeting at City Hall. On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Marlin King and our entire school district, I want to thank you for your patience. Please keep an eye on local media outlets and our district website for continued updates. For the district, I'm Greg Hammond.
Dr. Williams, would you have, have Ms. Corr present for us? Or also, Dr. Williams, do you have any comments that you would like to add around what your team has done this week before she makes the presentation?
Okay, so just as Catherine is coming, what my department have, have worked on academics and students. So we had five different committees, teams led by members of my leaders in my department. And we worked on academics, schedules, scheduling, registration, ESL, five oh four, spared students, special education, discipline framework, whole child health and safety. And what we, we had great conversations, a lot of people attended, and we were very appreciative. Great conversations created thinking around how we reenter school. We have, each team member have submitted a summary report coming from the conversations that we had on Tuesday night. And then tomorrow, we will start to disciple a little of that information to see where categories that we will put that information in. And then we will have a follow-up, have follow-up meetings with our committees to, to keep working toward getting this thing structured and ready. Catherine will come up and share information on our surveys.
Okay, I'm going to begin by sharing the results that came back from the parent and guardian survey that went out. This was sent out via multiple sources. It was sent out even by a text message through our messaging system to all of the parents. They could answer the responses from their phones or from their computers. It was shared via social media and links on our website. So it was out in multiple areas. Ashley, can you click to the next one? Thank you. We had four thousand six hundred and forty-nine total responses. It was opened on June twenty-second and ran through July first. And of those responses, the four thousand and seventy-five represents that they answered all of the questions on the survey. Important to note, I think, is that the green, this is about how many students did the respondents have in the school system? So the green meant that they had one, the blue had two, and the yellow had three or more. So when you put that together, that's over eight thousand students that were represented by the responses from the survey. And this shows you the breakdown between elementary, middle, and high. So again, a nice representative, we felt like that the responses that we got will cover all of the different grade bands of our students. This is one of the most important questions I think we asked. If the public health partners believe it's safe to allow in-person instruction in August, will your students return to school? Green was yes, they're certain they'll return for in-person instruction. Yellow said maybe, depending on social distancing and other measures. And the red at fourteen and a half percent was that they said no, they were certain they did not want them to attend in-person instruction. Parents were asked if health guidelines prevented schools from returning at full capacity, which they preferred. The yellow represents five-day remote, so remote learning from home, purely remote. That was thirty-three percent. Two-thirds preferred a hybrid model, which had part in-person instruction and part at-home instruction. So we proposed a couple of different options in terms of what that hybrid model would look like. As you can see, the yellow and the green were very close together, but the one that had, you got, you had three choices. You gave three points to your top choice, two to your second, and one to your first. That's how these numbers came about. So the one with the highest average was the green one, which was that the students would alternate Monday, Wednesday, Friday at person, at school, Tuesday, Thursday, at home, and then alternate the opposite week. So in other words, like an A-day, B-day schedule, going to school every other day and having in-home instruction every other day. Go back to that last one, just a minute. The second one, second option was looking at a Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday. And in that model, then Friday would be a virtual learning for everybody. So this would be two days at school for all students with one virtual for everybody, so three virtual really for everybody. And the last one, the red one, was alternating a week on and a week off. And that was not as popular with the parents. Okay, asked about transportation. If transportation was limited, would parents be able to get their children to school? Two-thirds said yes, and one-third said that, that that would be a problem, that they would need transportation provided by the district. We asked the parents how they had feel, felt about being prepared to help their children with distance learning. Twenty, or about thirty percent said very prepared, forty-nine percent somewhat prepared, and twenty-one percent not prepared at all. So there's definitely, our parents had some concerns about being ready to support their children with distance learning. We asked if parents were concerned if their child would be prepared academically for this upcoming school year. Thirty-four percent said not concerned at all, forty, about forty-seven percent somewhat concerned, and nineteen percent very concerned. So we do see some parent concerns about preparation. We asked about the, the availability of devices at home. Do you have a device other than a phone? Do you, like a computer, a tablet, an iPad? And do you have internet access? And almost seventy-eight percent of our students, that was a yes. They do have internet access and a device at home. We had, the, the red said that they, the only access they had to the internet was on the phone and they didn't have another device. So in other words, sixteen and a half percent, the phone is all they've got for internet or a device in the house. in the house. And then the yellow, they had another device but have internet, the only, the only access to internet would be on the phone. We did a survey to see what kind of devices they had. They could answer more than one response on this, but we saw that 3,000 respondents said that there is a computer in the home. Another 1,800, there were tablets, and then iPads, Chromebooks, and then other. And in that other category, several people listed laptop or MacBook. I think they were not thinking of a laptop as a computer, but thinking of it something differently. So there's a little bit more actually in that computer category. But the vast majority of the device they had in that other category was just a cellphone. This question, though, asked if there was a different device for every student in the home, because we did hear some concerns about multiple students in the house and maybe only one device to be able to do their schoolwork on. And we see that here that, that that's a little bit more of a concern. There's 56% that have a device for every child, but 44% do not have one for every child. There wasn't, the last question asked if they had any suggestions or comments, and we had about 3,000 comments, and we read through them all. And we tried to classify them and categorize them so we could see what was, what was the overwhelming thing that the parents wanted us to hear. And the top one, there were 342 comments left saying, asking us to please get schools reopened for in-person teaching. Next, 335 comments asking us to please take into consideration the health and safety of students and staff. There were 241 comments about the concerns about technology at home, asking for computers or internet help. A lot of concerns, over 200, about concerns for working parents in particular in the alternating day schedule when parents have to work full-time. We had 186 that asked for a fully virtual option, to have an option to not have to come back for in-person instruction. And there were 142 concerns about masks, and I think that was 71 concerns to have them and 71 concerns to not have them. It was split right down the middle. And social distancing, 110 comments on that. And as for consistency in communication, by consistency, we had lots of different platforms that were used in spring. Even amongst just individual students, parents had, if they had more than one teacher, more than one platform to keep up with. And a better communication system for teachers to be able to communicate with, with the parents and the students. Cleaning and sanitation was also a concern, and there were 51 comments of concerns of their students falling behind. So those are the results that have come back from the parent survey. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Then let's go ahead and jump to the staff survey. We also sent a survey out to staff members. The link was emailed to them. We had a total of 991 responses out of just over 2,000 current staff members. And the window was the same as it was for the, for the parents. There were 649 teachers that responded, 259 support staffs, such as educational assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, and then 83 administrators that responded. We asked the teachers what grade band they taught, and you can see that it was a pretty well-represented sample of our teachers that responded to the survey. And we also asked what subject they taught, and again, it was well-balanced across the subject areas in terms of who responded to the survey. Asked if conditions regarded, regarding COVID-19 in August are similar today, did they plan, what did they plan to do? So 354, and this was really close to 1,000 respondents, so that's close to 35% right there, planned to return to work without reservation. 580 planned to return to work, return to work but had some reservations. 24 said they did not plan to return to work, and 33 responded with other. It was an open-ended comment. Looking at those, most of them said they were undecided and waiting to see what the plans look like. We asked them what safety options they would like to see in schools take while students are present under current COVID-19 conditions. So the one that was, that got the most responses, 878, is to add additional cleaning and sanitation throughout the day. That seems to be the biggest thing that they would like to see. But as you can see, everything we put out there got responses. So 423 would like to see masks, 506 a slightly abbreviated day, 538 limited contacts with large groups, such as putting multiple groups together in the cafeteria, or our elementary classes tend to have multiple classes go to PE at the same time, so there's larger groups there also. 629 would like to see the staggered student days, so not all students are present. Social distancing in the classroom is that brown-colored bar, and minimizing student transitions, 416. We asked what primary concerns were, and as you can see, they're, they're pretty well-balanced across. There's concerns about, the one that was the highest is the orange. Again, this kind of goes back to the cleaning, classroom, and other student gatherings not being properly disinfected. Next was that green one, the availability of disinfecting materials and PPE. Also concerning was the public health regulations not being followed, students' mental health, the readjustment to the classroom and social life, transportation, having in-person interactions with others, and of course, underlying health conditions for themselves and their family. We asked the teachers if they had the option of traditional school or online learning, which would you choose for instructional delivery under the current situation? So blue was in-person, green was the combination of online and in-person, and orange was online-only. So again, it was the combination that was the most popular. We asked the teachers, do they have really reliable, high-speed internet connections that will support using a laptop for online and virtual learning? And 884 did, 93 did not, and the 14 others were just trying to divine what reliable was, internet, but not, maybe not too reliable. We wanted to see what online platforms they were familiar with. Zoom was the most popular one that they had all used, followed by Microsoft Teams and Google Meet. And then we asked about what training did they need in order to effectively teach with distance learning? And again, we can see that it was well-balanced across the board. There's kind of a need for all of these things. Hosting online meetings, the virtual classroom platform, how to put assignments and use a gradebook in there, accessing the curriculum online, posting and recording videos of a lesson, and recording and posting screencasts, as well as communication with students and parents was a concern here also. And then we took their comments, because their last one asked if they had any comment or suggestions to get back, and we did that same thing with the staff comments as we did with the parents and, and to tally up on how many were there. So again, asking for schools to be reopened and in-person was 65, and also at 65 was to please consider the personal, the personal and family health. So those were the two most popular comments made. Again, cleanliness came up in the comments 62 times, about concerns for cleanliness and the availability of sanitizer. There was a lot of comments about, did the students have the access that they needed to be able to do online learning? Concerns about wearing masks. From the teacher perspective, though, the biggest concerns was for wearing masks, for the, the students following the procedures, for it being difficult with young ones. I think if we've seen the difficulty talking in them for themselves also. There were concerns about social distancing, how effective our online schooling was in the spring, a need for consistency. And this was both on the, on the online platform and the expectations for students and for staff, to make sure that the expectations of what students were asked to do was consistent across schools as well as the expectations of staff. They commented on the need for training on these online platforms, the need for screening, and the concern of the tendency of students to come to school sick, and that's a concern for our staff. And also, there was a large number of comments from our, from our teachers who also have students in the school system, and if their students only went to school two or three days a week, but they had to work five days a week, how they could manage that. That was a concern for our teachers. So that summarizes the responses that we got on the staff survey. Any questions on that one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Catherine. Dr. Catley, did you have any comments that you want to add around your work team this week and any thoughts and plans for next week?
We started out, we invited around 80 people from the community and stakeholders to be a part of operations and communications. And our number one objective was to make sure everybody understood what our goal was, and that was protect and educate the students in our, in our district. And so we started with that. We used a survey, and I want to thank Dr. Williams and her team for getting that together, because that was a starting point for us. When we met with our group's coordinators are behind me here, and I'm going to say a thank you to them too, because we spent a lot of time on this because it's on everybody's mind. We want to do the right, we want to do the right thing and make sure that we make the right move. But the coordinators that we had, we decided to do it in three groups of three. We have operations, athletics, transportation, safety, physical and business part, human capital, maintenance, technology, and communications, so a broad area. So what we decided is, we had Mr. Powell, who was over operations part, Dr. Chandler was over the transportation. We had Dr. Green and Mr. Renfro, who did the human capital part and communications. So we met several times and had, had great meetings, but what we wanted to do was make sure that the questions that we were asking were different from the survey questions, so that we didn't not value the time of the people that came out with us and got some different discussion. They came up with some guiding questions and just really opened some eyes for some people on some things that we're going to have to look at athletics, how that looks. You know, how many can we take on a trip? How many can we bring in a stadium? How many can we transport in a school day? So it was so much, and I want to thank the team. We've got another team next week, and I want to thank the board members who came out and who are on our team. We appreciate that. But what we did, what we thought about was the people that have already re-entered to get them involved. So we had hotel motel people, we had restaurant owners, we had pastors, church pastors that have already done a reentry plan, and leaning on their expertise, and I know Mr. Arnold went to Dr. Williams's group too with, with the health department, you know, what is it that they expect for us to do? So really leaning on the experts in our community, and, and it was a great, we had a seven o'clock meeting on Tuesday morning. We also had a 5:30 meeting on Tuesday at Liberty, and went really well, and a lot of great conversation. Now we want, what we want to do is make sure that they know the outcome of that, and that they're, we continue to keep them involved, because we asked the questions because we wanted to know the answers to those. And, and again, what is it going to take to make sure our students and staff? Our staff can't be afraid either. You know, they, they have got to be, feel safe and, and make sure that we take care of our kids. So, questions?
Appreciate it. Ashley, would you scroll up more in the roadmap so the board members can see? Scroll, I'm sorry, scroll down. I apologize. So you can see the past updates. So we have been at, putting information out mid-June, maybe June 16th, if I'm not mistaken. Greg, is that right? June 16th. And so we are continually to update the roadmap, put it out so that our teachers and our families can be aware. We want to be very deliberate, and I know people are anxious around the time, and I'm anxious around the time. I'm one of the parents with a child who, whose parents got to go to work, and you got to figure out what your child has to do. So I'm, I'm in that boat with that family. And I want this community to know that with this team and all of the efforts that's put around this, we are doing everything that we can possibly think of to do the right thing. And when we talk about options and opportunities for this community, we will definitely be providing options and opportunities during this pandemic. So I want people to know that if we need, if families are going to need a hybrid model, if family need, families need alternate models, we're going to look in our board policies, we're going to suspend some of the policies, and we're going to work with families. We have to work with each other during this time. And so I just want to share that with this community, and I know you're anxious, but I want to let you, the community know that we will work with families. We will do whatever it takes to get through this together. And I certainly appreciate everyone for being patient with us, but we want to be deliberate, and we want to be very intentional with our information and the way we roll things out. And that's my update on the school new normal.
Dr. King, first of all, I appreciate that. That's, that's important. The, the main thing I've heard from, from teachers and parents, and my own wife being a, being an employee of the system, and me being a parent, and I hate to do this in a public forum, but is there any date when we can expect a final decision? And if so, can you clue us in on that? If not, kind of give the justification on why not?
Yeah, so what we want to do is get, get a date out ASAP. I would be meeting in our executive cabinet, meeting in the morning with the deputy superintendents, so that they can move forward and engage in the team and learning more around that. I talked with Mr. Arnold last night, and, and he, we had a great discussion around our health officials and, and kind of the thoughts that they're thinking. One of the things that I want to do is move forward with an August date, and, not a late August date, but what I do think is very important, and I think we have to recognize this, is that I, I, I do think we need to give our teachers at least one additional week for preparation and for professional development. When you look at the surveys and you see where they want to know more about platforms and the virtual learning options, I just think we owe them that, because in March, many of the teachers didn't get a chance to even close out classrooms. I mean, so if we're talking about teachers going back on the very first week, and you have all the obligations of the first week of in-service, and then learn how to implement a new normal, it's hard. So that's one of the things I know personally that I think is going to benefit teachers, is at least giving them at least one week to prepare of what the procedure and routine would be. Being a second-grade teacher, I mean, you got to have some procedures and some routines in place. So I hope that is sufficient.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. You know, the, the one thing I've heard that's been encouraging to me is I've had less of this needs to happen, and more of we just need to know what's going to happen. So I think Ms. Carroll said it, you know, we just need Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. I've, I've, I really haven't anybody call me or email me and demand this is what needs to happen. It's really just, hey, we just need to know. So I appreciate the, the concerted efforts towards that.
And the, this update, the roadmap will be going out tomorrow, so people can see kind of where we are. And then, of course, we continue to update this link, so anytime you can go back to this link and see our weekly updates around our school new norm initiative. And I have another idea. Let me just share this with you. What I want to do, I want to work with our faith-based community, health officials, our city government, and we all work together around this, so that when we do make this announcement, we do have the support and endorsement of these different entities. And I think that would bring even more support around our efforts to make sure that we're providing the best options and opportunities for our students. Dr. Williams, you want to speak about the CARES Act briefly?
Okay, you probably have documented in your packet about the CARES Act. I want to just mention a few things. We got roughly $3.8 million, the district, Jackson Madison County, for, from the CARES Act. Actual amount, $3,897,423.21. So we put that in seven different areas. Instruction, we have a virtual software platform, iReady, which we used some, some with the packets at the end of March. And so we have that as an online platform that can be used whether we're at school or whether the kids are at home, and that's for grades K-8. We have EdMentum, which is a virtual soft, software as read as well, for grades nine through 12. We have ESL software, and then we have special education, teletherapy, which opportunity to provide speech and language services to students through telehealth. The second care category is mental health curriculum. So we have in the, in the CARES Act promoting alternative thinking strategies, which is kind of a socio-emotional curriculum that we are purchasing for our counselors, so that they will be available to assist with the trauma we know and some of the issues that students will have on returning to school. We have personal protective equipment, the PPE, so we have the masks and gloves for schools. We have the We have the temperature kiosks, which are the automated, automated scanning of temperatures when you walk in the building for both employees and students. So these will be purchased as well. And then we have administrative costs, which we, that's having one person that's a retired to manage the purchase and requisitions. And we added competence, unemployment compensation, one hundred thousand dollars, which the unemployment, and that's to offset some of the unemployment benefits that had to be paid, additional benefits the districts incurred with, like substitute teachers and so forth, who are not able to work, to continue to work. And then we have, last, I want to just, was two things. Devices, we have, and we haven't decided on exact device, but we have iPads, Chromebooks, laptops for students and teachers, teachers. And we have approximately two-point-three million dollars for devices in this budget. And then out of the budget, we also had to allocate six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-three dollars to private schools. Any questions about the CARES Act? And this was, the areas that we allocated funds was based on meetings with the district team and, and input from everyone there. Questions about that?
Dr. Williams, I have one question.
Yes.
Looking at some models that some other school districts are, are setting up for lower grades, a lot of school districts ordering Plexiglas so they could shelter smaller students from students and those students from teachers to protect teachers. Have y'all thought about that, has that came up?
We have had some conversations with our school health coordinator around Plexiglas, and we were talking about the various ways that we could separate. We talked about that even, I think, in our meetings on Tuesday. So that, no decision has been made, and we did not put that in here, but what we do have is the protective, personal protective equipment. So that line item would include, could include something like that if that was necessary for us to purchase.
Good, okay.
Any other questions?
More question for Dr. Williams? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda, our student advisory committee. We do that every year. Our high schools send us students to advise us, and this year especially, we actually want to engage those, that group and advise us concerning this new normal, and possibly use them as a think tank, Dr. King. So any discussions, any ideas and suggestions about, in addition to, uh, things that we can use our advisory group for?
I just advise that we use them more. You know, we heard from them a couple of times the last twelve months, and, and I think that's super important. We hear from JMCAs, so from our teachers, in that avenue every, every single board meeting. I'm not necessarily suggesting we hear from them every board meeting, but I'd like to see them more inclusive than we had them last year.
Good idea, I agree. Any other comments? Okay, all right, thank you. Next, a possible change in our November meeting. If you look at, in your packets, we had our board meeting scheduled, but also on, in November, on our, the same day as our board meeting, the TSBA annual conference is scheduled. So I'm suggesting, it's not on the action item, but I'm suggesting that if we could get a common consensus that we move the November meetings to the second and the fifth. And the reason why we want to keep them separate is the fact that with school startups and possible more communications and engagement concerning our budget, that we actually need the work session in the, in the board meeting. Any questions, additions, suggestions? So will that work for everybody? You get that, Janice? Right, and the fifth is a meeting. Okay. Next, just one, one announcement. You've probably seen it on our website. On July twenty-third, the Chamber is sponsoring a welcome reception for Dr. King. It's July twenty-third from four-thirty to six PM, and the public is invited. We appreciate the Chamber for reaching out and assisting us with that. In addition to that, I again want to mention the Chamber, friends of the Chamber, for assisting us with the billboard for South Side High School Boys Basketball Team. So be on the lookout on the seventeenth, those billboards will be in four different locations, so it will be around this entire city. Lastly, I want to thank again Mayor Conger and the city for allowing us to use this venue. And with that, again, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion? You got a second? Adjourn, thank you all.